Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 17th Board of Selectments meeting. We, as you probably saw, postponed the executive session. 7:05 we have citizens input, uh, 7 o'clock we have citizens input. 7:05 we have a joint meeting with the Board of Health on a newly appointed member. 7:20 we have a Hughes Entertainment, Doing Business As Extreme Care.
Crazy.
7:35 a public hearing. 7:50 flag discussion. 8:05 wayfinding and branding results. 8:30 selectmen's update. 8:35 town managers' update. 8:40 assistant town managers' update, and then a few action items. So, Bill, you want to lead us in the...
Sure.
...pledge?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We were a few minutes late starting. It was because Board of Selectmen had a chance to go outside and see the new fire truck. Chief Keller here brought it by, and it was a pretty amazing truck. And while he's here, if he can come up for a quick second, we got notice of some really good news last week, and may as well have you tell us about it.
Yeah, so, in the spirit of regional efforts to go along with our regional communication center, we were, uh, we went into an agreement and, like, a collaboration with Mansfield to secure a grant to replace all of our hose and get some new rescue equipment. And the genesis of the grant was so that we would all have the same equipment, which is, which is really good, because we work with those guys every day. So, as a matter of fact, we just got back from a fire at the old chocolate factory. They had a fire on the construction site today, so we went over and helped them out. So, yeah, we work with them every day. It's about $150,000 that we're going to replace all, all of our hose, all of their hose, and everything will match and be compatible. So, our rescue equipment will be compatible, so it's really a good thing. So, we're excited that we got that from the federal government, so we've been very fortunate with the ladder truck and, you know, some of the other things we've got, so we're very lucky.
Yeah, a bunch of the grants we've gotten over the last few years have been outstanding.
Yeah, no, it's really, the ladder truck was really a kind of, was a crown jewel, so...
That was a score.
Yeah, that was a real score, so...
Yeah, absolutely beautiful truck. Been seeing around town a little bit more now, too.
Yeah, it's been, it's been busy, so we've been, we've been running around. We brought it to the senior center today so they could take a look at it and, you know, answer some questions, so it was a nice, nice time, so... Yeah, we're excited, the guys are real excited, so they keep it, they keep the apparatus. I can't say enough about the, you know, the way they keep the apparatus. It's really, I mean, if you look around, our trucks are second to none in terms of, you know, even the older ones, they keep them waxed, and, you know, they take a lot of pride in the vehicles and everything, so it's very fortunate to have the staff that I have.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, just, uh, through, to you two, Mike, Mike, could you just explain the difference between the truck, the new truck that you just bought and versus a standard ladder truck?
Sure, so, as we were planning out the, you know, the layout of the truck, one of the things we decided to do is, um, we decided to put a pump on a ladder truck, which is a little unusual, but, um, one of the huge benefits is that it's multifunctional now, so, you know, if we do end up on a call with the ladder truck and we have a fire we need to extinguish, there's water and a pump on the truck to do that, there's 500 gallons of water. So, that's, uh, you know, that's extraordinarily helpful. The old ladder truck didn't have any water on it, so, you know, there were times where we were out, we were kind of caught, so to speak, you know, we were in the, in the vehicle by itself, and, you know, we had a call on another town to help us, so wait for a truck to come from another side of town when things get busy. So, this truck, we decided to, you know, we really looked into the future, so that the truck was designed, you know, with really the way that we run in Foxborough, you know, a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of thought and a lot of analysis went into the layout of the vehicle, and really tried to be thoughtful of future, so we put different things in, so, as the town grows, it'll be functional. So, one of the, like, one of the unique features is we have a hose connection at the top of the ladder, so we can use the pre-piped waterway to use a hose if we have to go up on a roof or, you know, a multi-story parking garage or things like that, so that was, that was unique, that it's one thing, we kind of go in a little bit different direction. A lot of towns are buying the platform towers. You'll see they're, they're big bulky trucks. Our truck's still pretty functional, so we can get in side streets and things like that.
All right, thank you.
And all the mechanics, all the tools that you have are all battery operated, don't have to deal with gas anymore, all, like you said, integrated, do waltz?
Yeah, so, yeah, one of the things we did is we took the opportunity to, again, you know, we don't do generators anymore. Um, a lot of the old hydraulic tools, like the jaws of life, ran off of long hydraulic hoses, and we disconnect them, the hydraulic fluid will leak, and, you know, it would damage the compartment of the truck and the body of the truck, and same thing with gasoline. A lot of the saws we have now are battery powered, so we don't have the gasoline leaking in the compartments, and the gasoline would eat the saw blades and things like that, so it's really, it's really nice, you know, it's technology, it's unbelievable, our technology advances, you know, we're, we're, we're very fortunate that we're, you know, we replaced a lot of our old equipment with the latest technology, and, you know, it's certainly, it's just, it's great.
Awesome. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, guys, thank you very much.
You're good.
Anyone else for citizens input? No, good, all right. So, we're going to have a joint meeting with the Board of Health. Uh, the Board of Health wants to come on?
Doug, how's it going?
Good, how are you guys?
Great, thanks.
Good evening. All right, so, how do we do this?
I think you have to open your meeting, we've already done ours.
All right. All right, it's almost 7:10, I'll open the joint meeting with the Foxborough Board of Health. Under open meeting laws of the state of Massachusetts, Eric Garagano is the clerk. My name is Paul Steves, I'm the chairman. Meeting is taking place at the Endor Gala Junior Meeting Room, Foxborough Town Hall, 40 South Street. Tag, you're it.
Okay. So, you're presenting to us a new member that I guess we'll both vote on, or is...
So, in July, our third member resigned. Unfortunately, he resigned, he decided to step down, and so we have a vacancy. I guess we would typically wait until May, if it was April, or if it was, like, the beginning of May, or March maybe, but since it's, since it's plenty of the year left, we are going to try to appoint someone, so we interviewed some people, good candidates, and we're, we're pleased to recommend Elena Deckers to fill our open seat until May, until in the May election. At that time, she may decide to run for reelection, or she may run.
Run away.
Her choice, you'll see, right? So, um, so, I don't, what do we do next?
Elena, is she here?
She is here.
Hi.
Someone new, come on up.
Okay.
Introduce yourself, maybe tell us a little bit about yourself, and...
Say everyone.
Don't give many details.
Keep as vague as possible.
My name's Elena Deckers, I've been a resident here 23 years in Foxborough, and raising my four children. And I also am a physician. I've worked many aspects of the continuum, I've been in primary care, but lately I'm mostly a hospital medicine physician, and I have specialized in palliative medicine. So, I am in the South Shore area where I work for the same hospital for over 17 years. And there I've been one of the first members of the Hand Hygiene Committee, going back, my undergraduate degree is in microbiology. I'm, um, I tell my kids I'm a germaphobe, but it's not, that's a little exaggeration, but I am very particular about strict standards and things, and so I continue to work, and when I read the Foxborough Reporter that advertised there was a need for a person in the Board of Health locally, I thought, if they need somebody, maybe I should volunteer to help. So, that's how this even came to be. I really wasn't, this wasn't on my scope or anything until I saw that in the Reporter. And then I reached out, and they explained that I could come and meet them and kind of observe a couple meetings, which is what we've done, and I found it quite interesting, and somewhere I think I could lend, you know, some of my expertise, and I thought that it would be a positive thing, so, for myself, and to grow and learn, and then...
And for us, and for the town.
Yes.
So...
So, you can see how we're excited about this.
Qualifications, my goodness, yes.
Yeah, compared to...
It's kind of a step up, right? That's what I'm saying.
Make us look bad.
Any questions from our board?
No, no.
No.
I received a glowing recommendation, and that was good enough for me, so...
Great.
All right, cool. So, I think we both have to approve, I mean, I know we do, I assume you do, too.
Well, I think, I think at this point, we take, we take a vote, and then you take a vote, or...
Yeah.
Is that right?
So, what we do is you enter a name, it's a nomination, and if you're the only person nominated, so you close the nominations, and then, and then you put the, put it up for a vote.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to make a motion to appoint Elena Deck...
Nominate.
Sorry, nominate Elena Deckers to fill the open seat on the Foxborough Board of Health until, until May 2020.
I'll second that nomination.
Any other nominees?
Do we do it individually?
Yeah, and so, you would, you would take your vote first, and then the board can take theirs.
No discussion?
Any further discussion, no?
Not for me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
The board, the board make a motion to approve the recommendation as presented.
All right, make a motion to approve Elena Decker to the Board of Health to fill the vacancy until the May 2020 town elections.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. That's seven-nothing. Pretty good.
Pretty good.
Very impressive.
Now, we just got to talk during a stand.
Running again. Just got to run.
She hasn't been on the job five minutes yet.
Congratulations, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I need to adjourn.
Yeah, you should adjourn your meeting. Thank you for your confidence in us.
Before you go, you got to adjourn your meeting first.
Make a motion?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
All right.
And what we'll do is we'll get a letter to Elena, and then we'll, we'll have her sworn in.
So, not tonight, oh, actually, B.C.'s gone, so...
I think he's gone, yeah.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, we are a little early. Is everyone here from Hughes Entertainment? You guys want to go a little early? Sure. You up? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, so, you are in front of us for a, is it a, actually, a common vic license, entertainment license?
Yes.
For the, for the facility down in, being an old timer here in Foxborough, the Bradley's Plaza, is that correct?
Uh, yes, yep, yep. I think of it as Ocean State Job Lot Plaza.
Oh, no, no. You're a newbie. All right, so, tell us a little bit of where you're at now, because I know, I think when I first came on the board, you guys started the process.
Yeah, we, so, we, we hope to open, well, we expect to open in the middle of November. We're fully under construction. We're a family entertainment center with two major attractions, one being an inflatable air park, and the other being laser tag, the game of laser tag, and then we have amusement games, and we have a, what we call a pizza cafe, where we would make fresh baked pizza and sell pizza and fountain drinks. We, a big part of our business is birthday parties for kids, but for people of all, you know, all ages, various groups, church groups, camp groups, individuals that just want to come in and play with their family.
Okay, great.
So, I think the reason I'm here is for the common vic license, which, in order to sell pizza, I believe we need to have that.
Right, and an entertainment license?
Correct.
You want to have any TVs or anything in the cafe?
Uh, we are.
Yeah, so...
What did we do before, the arcade, I think? Was the arcade the one that we did a while ago?
Yes.
The arcade was already approved, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Nope, everything was in...
I think people are eagerly awaiting your opening.
Yeah, we're excited, well, it's good to hear that.
All right, yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
I motion to approve Hughes Entertainment Incorporated Doing Business As Extreme Craze, applications for a common bachelor license, and a seven-day entertainment license located at 30 Commercial Street, Foxborough, Mass.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Good luck.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, 7:35 is a public hearing, so I think we should do some other business till we get a little closer to that time. Bill, you want to do town managers' report?
Can I just hold? I got a couple things I want to just pull together first.
Absolutely, let's do some action items then.
Motion to approve Warm Town Brewery LLC, application for seven one-day wine and malt licenses for 9/21/19, 9/22/19, 9/28/19, 9/29/19, 10/5/19, 10/6/19, and 10/10/19.
Second.
All righty, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve Splitsville Early Liquor License Extension, request of 10 a.m. for New England Patriots Sunday Home Games accompanied with food service for the following dates: September 22nd, December 22nd, only if a 1 p.m. game, and December 29th, 2019.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. A motion to appoint Finance Director George Samia to the following boards: Town Asset Review Committee, Billboard Advisory Committee, and Capital Improvement Planning Committee for a one-year term to expire on 5/1/2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve Public Event Application for the Sage School, a 5K Run Walk on Saturday, May 9th, 2020, from 9 a.m. to 10:30 a.m.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to accept gift donation of $100 to the Foxborough Fire Rescue Gift Fund from Charles E. and Jean R. Alber.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to accept gift donation of $100 to the Veterans Services Department from the American Legion Post 93 for the POW MIA vigil.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, under discussion, Ally, do you mind coming up and telling the millions of people at home what this Saturday is, and give them a personal invite?
Yeah, so, in Foxborough, well, actually, all over the Commonwealth, but since I don't work for the Commonwealth, I work for Foxborough, we're doing a 24-hour vigil Friday at 1604 o'clock to Saturday 4 p.m., and then right after the vigil is a ceremony, the honor guard, the American Legion Riders will be there, a guest speaker, just a little presentation, the missing man table will be there with a description of what each item on the table means. All are welcome to attend. We will be having people on the common for 24 hours, so if citizens don't want to pull a shift, I welcome anybody bringing maybe a hot cup of coffee or maybe a sandwich, because it is 24 hours and it's going to be a long, cold evening, so, and then, and then that's it, and it'll be the eighth, ninth, ninth year, and then next year, at the 10th year, I'm hoping to get Mr. Johnny Mitchell, who started this whole thing nine years ago, to be our guest speaker. He declined this time, but that's okay, I'll wrangle him next year, absolutely.
All right, thanks, appreciate it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody need time to review the draft?
I already looked at them.
Yeah, good.
Motion to approve 8/20/2019 meeting minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I will go to selectmen's update. Anybody on the board have anything to say?
I just want to thank the town for coming out this past Saturday, supporting the McGinty Family Fun Day. It was a record crowd. Rain held off almost until the end, but just thanks for everybody's support on that.
All right, I was going to speak about the grant, but Chief Keller here already did. The only other thing coming forward is, I got a request from a towns member, Mr. Ferguson, about the Green Community Project, and over the last, you know, four to six weeks, we've done a lot of research on that here, which a lot of the department heads in town already knew about. I think our next board meeting, October 2nd, we're going to have...
October 1st.
October 1st.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to have Mr. Ferguson, and I think the deputy director of the program, come and give us about a 30-minute presentation on the program. So, that'll, that'll, that'll be coming forward, and other than that, I've...
What does that program entail for those of us that...
And I'm still learning about it myself, maybe, Bill, you probably even do a better job of explaining what the Green Community...
Like, does that wrap with plastic bags that we've been talking about?
No, no, that's entirely different. This has to do with being energy-efficient buildings, any energy-efficient vehicles, the town, we got a lot of feedback already from town, town department heads, because this is a program that's been going on for the last couple of years in other communities, and I guess there's like 200 communities that have signed on to it, but there's a lot that I don't know about, which, well, I think we'll have them come and make a presentation, so we'll all have a better idea.
Yeah, the Green Community Program's been, been in place for a number of years in Massachusetts. Foxborough, for a number of reasons, has just not taken advantage of it, but it looks as, as we look at all the things that we've done here, we've done, we've actually done a lot of things that are required under the guidelines, but at this point in time, if we were to do it, it is, it's not, it's questionable as to how much, how much benefit we would actually receive by doing, by joining it. So, we, in other words, we've already done a lot of the things that you can get credit for, and perhaps even get some money for, so, through different programs that we've done over the years. So, we're certainly, we should definitely listen to see if there's all opportunities that we should take advantage of, but it's, in talking with the folks and the staff members that we, that are familiar with the program, we're not, we're not sure if it's, if it's right for us to even, even join at this point.
I think we had a presentation a few years back...
Yeah.
...in front of the board on this.
Right.
And that was the consensus then, that...
Yeah. We've, we've actually done a lot of things already, so, and not sure that there's a real benefit for us, but, but it's okay, I mean, it's, maybe there's new things about it that I, we're not aware of, and it's worth, it's worthy of a, of a presentation.
We have had some of the benefits of, that would come under that program already, like, you know, green, green building, you know, type of, you know, those, those codes, you know, be environmentally friendly, using efficient vehicles where applicable, still not our big fire trucks and dump trucks, but the smaller vehicles go into, you know, more efficient vehicles.
Inspection vehicles, you know, are getting smaller.
Okay, thank you. Still not ready?
I'm good now, so, thank you, I'm sorry, sorry about that, so...
No, no problem.
So, just the, the, I just wanted to, on your desk tonight is the copy of the, of the latest draft of the warrant. The board recalled at the last meeting that you wanted to do a, an amendment to Article 12, which would allow the hearings to be heard by the town manager versus the board, and Kay Conley, our town council, has revised that language to include that, so it is included in Article 12 now, all right?
So...
And then, we've been working on getting together the, doing the pre-planning for the financial summit, which is coming up on October 17th. The meeting actually will be held here now, in this room. Turns out this room actually was available to us, so we're going to actually, we're not going to stray far from here, it'll be right here in this, in this room at 6:30 on October, October 17th.
17.
It's a Thursday night, all right? Some of the things that we're going, we are going to meet with the advisory committee tomorrow night, they're studying their review process of the warrant, and one of the things we're going to try and, try and get from them is some ideas, is the things that they would like to see addressed through the financial summit, but I think it's really important equally that this board, and even the school committee for that matter, who, who, who may be listening right now, that we get some, some indication as to what's important for people to know. And I think we're even going to try and get some word out to the public at large to see what kind of information people want to hear, because we're hap, you know, we've got a little bit of time to help prepare for that, and we want to make sure we're appealing to the audience the best way possible. I'm not, we're not going to get into a very detailed presentation, one which we did in the first financial summit, I think a lot of information's out there, and it really hasn't changed a whole lot since the last time, but, but we do want to get feedback as to what are the biggest concerns people have, because we've heard concerns raised, but we haven't always got the, the information hasn't always come back the way that I think it should be presented, so I think we want to try and get to the bottom of that and make sure that the, that the public remains fully, fully informed on the issues of, particularly in finances of the town.
Well, I think on that note, Bill, I think it would be a good opportunity to re-educate the public on the financial policies that the town has adopted...
Good thought.
...that all the, all the boards have signed off on, and, you know, maybe, you know, George is new, but maybe have him just give an update of where we are and meeting the goals of those financial policies...
Yep.
...and, you know, staying on track...
Right.
...to stay in compliance with those, and if, if there's anything that needs to be adjusted on those, on those, on the financial policies, because it's a living, breathing document, it's, you know, just because it's, it's there doesn't mean that's what we do no matter what.
Right.
If things are working great, stick with it, if there's things that need to be changed, we should, we should discuss it.
Well, it's, it's a good time, opportunity to talk about the financial policy before we start the budget season, so that everybody knows what we're trying to, trying to stay within the lanes that we've established for this community, so I think it's a good time to bring that up. Certainly, any other thoughts that board members have certainly let me know, and we, because we're going to be working on that pretty, pretty, pretty consistently over the next few weeks, to try and get that prepared for the 17th, all right? The other thing is that we are working on a swearing-in process for, for new Chief Grace, and we look to, we're looking to have it on the first, Amanda, if I'm not mistaken, is on October 1st, and we'll be getting the details out to everybody, but right now it looks like October 1st we'll be doing that, and, and we're going to be doing it at the Public Safety Building, in the, in the McGinty, McGinty Room itself. So, more to come on that, but we'll be getting the details out, we're working, finalize all the details as we speak.
When's Chief Baker's last day?
It will be the 2nd, so, it's actually, it's, it actually times up pretty well. One thing you might notice over the next week or two is that the new playground down at the, drawing a blank...
Booth.
The booth, thank you, the booth field is, is under construction, with all the equipments were delivered this past weekend, and as the construction is beginning on that process, and I'm told that it should take no more than a couple weeks to get, get finished, so the new product will be substantially nicer than we've had in the past, and what you, something we've seen in the past, so, looking forward to seeing that completed, and looking forward to that result. I did have in my, I was looking through some of my aged files today, and I did come across this letter from, from Joan Gallivan, who reached out to the board, just to indicating that she really liked the idea of having a meeting before the annual town meeting to go over articles and sort of... to go over articles and sort of help educate the town meeting. And I do think it's a great idea. I think that, you know, we can probably, I think the financial summit can actually help that to a degree in sort of planning that out. But I think we've got a little, a few months to start preparing for that. But I think if we can do that and if the board agrees, then we should maybe work towards, towards achieving that. Because I think it's be, again, more engaging, more engagement of the public to get them involved in the, in the issues early on so that there's, there's no surprises at town meeting. The, the parking lot, the new parking lot over at, at the Snyder property is, is nearly ready. We just, we just need to have the definition of that parking lot. I think we talked about it the other night. We need it defined by some, some barriers of some sort, and Roger Hill is working on that piece of it, hoping to finish it up fairly soon. And Amanda's been working on a new process for uploading minutes with the town clerk. And I know that's been an issue in the past, and so we're trying to, she has been working to try and figure out a way to address that. And they've been working on a, on a pretty good process so as to get things up to date. It's going to take a little while because of backlog of things, but over time, she's going to get that pretty, pretty much caught up. So now that we have the new page, the new website in, in play, and it's working, working fine, we can actually start loading stuff onto it, which will be, I think, a big, big help for people looking for, for that, that information that's been, that's been somewhat aged at this point, but certainly important to the rest of the community. And then last but not least, I wanted to just indicate to the board that we'll be, we'll be looking to present to you a, we talked about doing a single license for Gillette Stadium at one point. We've been talking about that for a number of years now, but we've never, we're, we're close to finalizing that, and I just wanted to let the board know that you may see that in another week or two. So I'll stop you getting that information out as soon as the town council gives me the green light to go forward. But town council will be here to present that to the board at that time.
Just a, a question, sir.
Yeah.
What's the purpose of having a single license application?
So the, the purpose is, is that we, throughout the year, we, in fact, a lot of communities have gone to this approach, and Boston, Mansfield have gone through the single license application because it, it limits the number of hearings that you have to have throughout the year. So in other words, you, you would, we would probably have seven, eight, nine, 10 license hearings for events being held at Gillette Stadium. Now, in the event, there are a lot of safeguards put into this license requirement, so in the event that there's any major concern over a certain show or a certain event, the board could certainly hold, request that hold a hearing on that specific event. But what this does is sort of gives the, the craft organization, in this day and age, it's extremely difficult to compete for different license, different events, is a lot, it's a lot of competition out there. So what this does is, is allow them the opportunity to actually plan ahead and, and sort of secure those events in a more timely fashion. So it's advantageous both to the town because we can plan ahead as well, and they can also plan, and they can plan for their events as well. So there is, there is a mutual benefit for having it done. Along the lines of a, did I answer your question?
Uh, yes, okay.
Okay. There is a, another event that's coming up next summer. Taylor Swift has announced today that she's, she's going to be doing a show, two shows here in Foxborough. And the unique thing about that is that she's only doing two shows in the country. Two of the shows are going to, uh, four shows total, two in Los Angeles and, and two here in Foxborough. The two in Los Angeles, I believe, are at the new LA, LA Stadium that's being built out in Orange County. So, so obviously, it's a pretty, pretty unique opportunity to see a show out here and to be, and to be chosen. There's only two venue, one of the only two venues in the entire country. So I think that's a great, a great achievement for the, for the stadium. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bill. Mike?
Sure, I have a couple of things. So last week, Bill and I and a number of the selectmen and others in the community attended a 9/11 ceremony over at the Public Safety Building. They do this annually at 9:55 a.m. You know, Pastor Bill Dudley, you know, was the, was the keynote speaker there. They always do a beautiful and, and very solemn event. It is not very long, but it's very moving. I would encourage people in the future to, to come and, and see what they do. It's, it's really, you know, a great dedication to, you know, things that happened that many years ago. And with all of our public safety officials involved and, you know, a memory that we carry with us. Today, I was over at the Council on Aging, seeing the new fire truck, and, and also seeing our firefighters who weren't out actively fighting fires, actually serving hamburgers and hot dogs to our seniors. They know how to pack a room. I don't know if it was the, the truck, the uniforms, or the hamburgers. I think it was probably a, a combination, but that place was jam-packed and, you know, really a, a nice event for the, for the seniors and a, a chance for them to show their gear. About halfway through, folks eating their hamburgers, the place cleared out because they did have that fire that the chief mentioned, but just wanted to mention that they were over there doing that.
It's like any event. If you feed them, they will come.
Yeah. Yeah. So the, the main reason that they were over there, though, was to advertise a program that they've started, and it's, there are, there are flyers over at the Public Safety Building as well as in the administration office. I'll hold one up in a second. But it's called Home Fire Safety Inspections, and it's for owners of households in Foxborough that are over, that are 65 years or older. And the, the fire department will come out there and check the operation and age of smoke and, and carbon dioxide detectors. You know, there's, there's no charge, and if there's, you know, the, if there are simple upgrades needed, you know, the, the fire department will be there to help them do that. And they'll be starting that on October 1st. That was really why they were at the Council on Aging today, but they brought their bling with them. And I don't know if this can be seen, but if, if it can't, the, you know, they'll be, you know, they'll, they'll be available over at the Public Safety Building. And I will say that folks that are hearing this and are interested in getting set up for one of these inspections starting on October 1st, they can call Kathleen at the fire department, and her number is 508-698-7022. One, two other quick announcements. The annual employee health fair and health and wellness fair is next Thursday. That's at the Ahern School, September 26th, from 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. This is a, this is a program that mutually benefits the, the town, the taxpayers, as well as the employees. It, it advocates for healthy lifestyles and, you know, and, and saves the, the town money by us getting rewards through our insurance provider, as well as less lost time for employees who are sick. The flu shot is offered there at no cost to folks who are carrying the, the town health insurance at $27 for folks who are not carrying the insurance. And lastly, just to tag on to what Bill was saying about the financial summit, over the next 30 days building up to that, we'll be pushing out notices, some financial fun facts, things that folks may not know in regards to municipal finance. And we'll also be sending out a, a short nine or 10-question quiz to anyone who's interested in it. And I think it will help prime and help people to be prepared for that summit, whether they're watching at home on TV or coming here to watch it in person. So if they're interested in that, they can email either Bill or myself and just say, you know, send us the quiz, you know, give us your email or address you'd like that sent to. Thanks.
So that summit will be televised, then?
That's correct.
Yep.
All right. 7:35, we've got a public hearing. Did they step outside?
The gentleman's here. Okay.
Oh, you're here. I'm sorry.
I'll keep you away.
All right. We've got to read a notice first, though.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, September 17th, 2019, beginning at 7:35 in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, on the application of a transfer of stock and change of ownership beneficial interest for an annual all-alcohol restaurant license for SV Patriot Place LLC, DBA Splitsville Patriot Place, 220 Patriot Place Manager Kevin O'Brien. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Morning, everybody. Ryan Gosda from McDo McQuilty Miller. On behalf of the licensee entity, SV Patriot Place LLC, the application tonight, the licensee would actually like to withdraw, doing to failing to inadvertently include a pledge of license as part of that application. So rather than have two public hearings and going through the state approval process twice, we'd like to withdraw and refile virtually the same application this week, but taking off a pledge of license and then coming back before you all in about two weeks. So trying to expedite it as best we can, so.
Should, should we just continue? Or, actually, we can't continue if he's withdrawing the license. If he's withdrawing, yeah.
The unfortunate part is we just have to re-notice and include an applied suit.
Okay. So, um-
And that was something you just learned today, right?
Yes, yeah. Unfortunately.
Okay. So do we, so there's really no comment at this point?
Just, just a motion to, to, to withdraw the application as proposed.
I make a motion that as the application's being withdrawn, we take no action on this matter at this time.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to close the public meeting, too?
You need to, you close the public hearing as well.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? See you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Phil. See you.
All right. Next on the agenda, there's been a citizen that wants to bring back up the discussion of the flag, Patriots' flag being flown underneath the American flag on, on the common. And let me come on up and make your presentation.
Well, he comes up, too. Can you, what did we do during the, the first home game? I didn't have a chance to-
We did not fly it.
Okay.
We did not fly it. Because I think it was the direction of the board that we would not do that until further discussion was held.
Yeah, I really thought this was your idea to have a new discussion. But that's okay.
Well, I think, oh, absolutely. But you brought it to my attention, so I wanted to-
Give you an opportunity.
Why didn't you, give you an opportunity to speak and, and bring up opinions that I don't think was heard the last time.
Well, Bob Murphy in Comey Ave, Foxborough. From what I understand, we had a policy here in the town where we're going to fly the Patriot banner underneath the American flag when the Patriots were in town, playing in town. And for some reason, a couple of guys, and that's all I know of, is a couple of guys, one of whom I don't believe lives in Foxborough, but he wrote the letter because the other guy admitted he couldn't write. So we got two people, one out of town, one in town, saying it's no good. You can't do that. It's against the flag code. Well, I don't believe that it is against the flag code. And as, as Roger's admitted in the meeting we had here before, the flag code means nothing. And, because it really doesn't. Nobody's going to go to jail over it. There's people in town flying their country of origins flag underneath the American flag. That's against the code, but nobody says anything about it. When the Patriots or any other football team comes out there with the flag laying flat, all sorts of people waving it, that's against the code. You're not supposed to have it laying flat like that. So there's, and he admitted the code's nothing. Leah brought up that she thought maybe it was something against the NFL, not against the Patriots. And that's when she was told she didn't have an opinion because she wasn't a veteran. I guess none of you guys can have an opinion. Because I don't believe, I'm not, I could be mistaken, I don't believe any of you are veterans. So nobody up here can have an opinion. Well, I have an opinion, and my opinion is that the banner ought to be able to fly down there, under the American flag. And I'm not looking for it all the time, I'm just looking for it during the game, when there's a game going on here in town, just to show a little pride in the, in the Patriots. There's really nothing in Foxborough that will have people talking outside of Foxborough. Nobody's going to worry about us not being able to go around a road either the right way, or have bumpy roads, and then when they get fixed, they complain. But people always want to talk about the Patriots, whether they want to talk good or bad. I was in Scotland last year, and I, I'm talking to this young Arab fellow that was sitting at the table next to us. And we were talking, and I said I was from Foxborough, and he said, "Ah, the Patriots." You know, this is over in Scotland. It's all over, all over the world. People know Foxborough was the home of the Patriots. And I just thought that we should be able to show a little bit of pride in the Patriots and have that banner fly. Because I don't believe it's against the code, but the code doesn't mean anything anyway. So why not? I tried to get names.
Yeah, go ahead.
I tried to get some names of people in town to sign a petition saying it's okay. And I ran into a small problem. I got about 12 names, but I've been away. In fact, I came back from a little vacation down in Pennsylvania to be here for this. I tried to get, somebody I know was going to go to a Legion, not a Legion, yeah, American Legion meeting, tried to get some people to sign. Couldn't get them to sign. Not because they were opposed to it, they didn't want to get involved. I tried the VFW, and I was told I couldn't do anything with the VFW because they didn't want to get involved. And that stopped me from talking to people there. And of course, the guy that didn't want me to talk to the veterans there is from out of town. So we get people from out of town telling us what we can do. I just feel that we ought to be able to do that, show a little bit of pride.
Since, since your letter, I've done a little research, too.
Yeah.
Spoke with Ally and her assistants, who are both veterans. They didn't see a problem one way or the other. If we flew it underneath it, they'd just be just as proud as, if we didn't. But I think Mike, when he was VSO at one point, did look into the flag code and said that there was nothing in that code that had anything to do with being able to fly that Patriots' flag underneath it.
That's correct, and I wouldn't mind saying a few words to that if you don't mind. First of all, just to correct the record, that, that flag code does mean a lot. It's guidance. But, but Bob is right. Nobody's going to go to jail for it. It's, it's not law. It's, it's guidance, really. It's code. So it's, you know, all through it, it says you should. It doesn't say you shall, you may, it says you should. And it's, so it's guidance, it's, it's important, but it's also important to know that we're not doing anything wrong, whether we fly that there or not. And I, I'm not here to advocate whether we do or don't do it. But the other thing I really want to stress is that these folks up here, starting with Leah and as well as our other four selectmen, I feel very strongly have every bit as much to say about what we fly under the American flag as anyone who served in the U.S. military. And, you know, of course, it's, you know, the, the folks who have served in the military hold the flag in a, in a very special, you know, place in the heart because they've worn it on their sleeve and, you know, as do our police officers and firefighters. But as American citizens, we all get a say in this. And, and that's, you know, why we went to war or went and served, because we as citizens have a say-so in, in what goes on in our government. So I know you're trying to make a point, but I just want to clarify that, that I think you're overstating it maybe, but, and maybe it's because of, because of something that someone else said, and you were, and you were-
That's right. That was not my opinion.
Exactly.
I'm just taking it. If she can't do it, then they can't either.
Right.
What he was saying.
Exactly. And I just want to correct the record that, that any U.S. citizen, any resident of this town, does have a say-so in that. And I think that's important, that people remember that. But getting back to when I was VSO, yeah, Bill came to me when I was a veteran service officer and asked me, is there any reason why we shouldn't? Is there anything, code or law or anything else that we'd be violating or, or are we doing anything wrong? And I, I said then, like I'll say now, no, there isn't. We're not violating the code. Again, it goes back to should or shouldn't. The, the official government flagpole for this town is in front of this building. This is the one that must be lowered to half-staff when the notice comes out from the president This is the one that must be lowered to half-staff when the notice comes out from the President or from the Governor. And it's the only one actually in town that has to. But we do it with the Public Safety Building and Council on Aging and Library, and we do it at the Common as well to be consistent. But it's really, this one is the one that is the official headquarters building of the government of the town of Foxborough. So, so, you know, whatever is decided, I think we're okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think.
Mr. Chairman. I was just going to say, being a member of the board, last year, was there discussion amongst members of the board? Because to me, it's a policy issue for the community, that this board, you know, can establish policies they think that are best for the members of the community. And was there any discussion of it?
Yeah, there was discussion. I think, I think it happened Super Bowl fifty, after fifty-one?
It was following, yeah, it was, it was following the forty-nine. Super Bowl forty-nine, I think.
Yeah. We decided to, to fly the Patriot flag underneath the American flag, so when people came up one forty, they would know that they, they entered Foxborough, the home of the world champion New England Patriots. And that's, and that's what the intent was. Like, like you said, it's all about pride.
Pride.
You know, I think everybody is prideful of the American flag. But we also have, you know, an unprecedented football team, you know, making history in our hometown. Our little, little town of seventeen thousand, that's the envy of, of the NFL. Yeah, we should, we should be prideful of it and let everybody know that you're in Foxborough, home of the world champion, six-time world champion New England Patriots. So that's what, that's what the thought process was.
Well, given the fact that in two more years, we're looking at a fiftieth anniversary of the Patriots in our community, twenty-five years on a lesser note for the Socrates in the community. And perhaps that's a vote at our next meeting we can take as a policy.
To establish the policy?
To establish a policy.
Can we even do it tonight, or do we?
I have no problem with tonight. We'll have a discussion, I mean, if, if everybody's ready. But was there a actual policy, or was it?
It was just a discussion.
Discussion, right? It was just a discussion.
It's not written policy, because, you know, things change.
Right. So it wasn't really a policy per se, it was just, let's fly the flag. And then last year, we said, "All right, let's not fly the flag and put up banners."
Just remember, it was in the off-season.
Yeah, I think we kind of, I don't think we took a formal discussion, it was more like, let's table it until the season, and now here we are.
I don't know where Rogers figured that that common belonged to the veterans. But that's why, I'm not saying you people don't have an opinion. I'm saying that based on what he said, you don't have an opinion. And, and like I say, I don't know where he got the idea that that common belonged to the veterans. There's a lot of stuff up there.
Well, it's the memorials, but obviously.
Yeah, but there's other stuff up there too. I mean, they got stuff up there from the lions and the fire and, you know.
Absolutely. And I, you know, it's not an empirical study, but, you know, I, I see patients here in Foxborough, and over the last couple of weeks have asked my veterans, you know, their opinion. And almost to one, they were like, "Fly the flag, fly the Patriots' flag." They didn't have a problem with it.
Everybody wants to, Isaiah, everybody wants to talk about it. I was out in Pennsylvania another time, and I went to Carlisle to a milit, Army post out there. And there was a, I was by the car, and with my wife, we had gone inside this building and seen all sorts of stuff that won't see the light of day from, there's so much stuff there. And standing by the car, we're going to go for a walk around and see some of the, the equipment that's there. And I hear some guy say, "I like the stickers on your car, except the Patriot one." And I turn around, it's a full-ball colonel. He's in charge of the place out there. He says, "If you guys are still here, when I come back from where I'm going, I'm going to show you some stuff." And he did. He went looking for us because we were still there, and brought us into the back rooms and saw all that stuff. If I didn't have that Patriot thing there, I never would have gone there. You know, I mean, it's, that thing is.
It's highly recognizable.
Yeah. Any other thoughts from board members?
I mean, just, there's a, there's a home game on Sunday, and, you know, like you, I've gone out and talked to people, and obviously, this is one of these really challenging decisions because no matter what you do, there's people on the other side that don't like the decision. But, you know, respecting and, you know, honoring everyone, I do think, you know, although it may be unpopular with some people, I would like to move to fly the flag on Sunday, you know, and if we, if we have another policy discussion, maybe we can make it more formal. But, you know, like you said, just traveling internationally last weekend, you don't have to say, "Oh, I'm from Massachusetts, I'm from, you know, Boston." If you say you're from Foxborough, people know where you're from. Because that's who we are.
Yeah.
And, you know, being there for a game, it almost gives me goosebumps sometimes that this is in our hometown, and, and people all over the country, you know, recognize that and see that, so.
I don't go to the games because I can't afford it. I've, I've gone up there a couple of times when we had no power and Kraft opened the place up and let us eat there, and, and charged the telephones and things like that. And I went up there for the Senior Olympics, when we had that up there.
Well, I mean, I don't, for the, the board has a competing issue, you know, I have no problem taking a motion to fly the Patriots' flag.
Mr. Chairman, just a, just a point of, of technical information, that one of the things that we did do to certainly preserve the, and respect the, the US flag in, in flying that, was that we actually created a separation between the two flags. So that, that would clearly indicate that we were trying to be respectful of the flag. And that was recommended to us, I don't know if it was Mike that did that, or if it was, if it was Dave Lallaberty, but he recommended that we create a separation, which we did.
Just a couple of feet.
Yeah, it was a couple of feet, just to kind of create that, that respect for the for the flags.
It was actually, I think it was either Mr. Rogers or one of the veterans who was, who was asking this to be addressed, who asked them to be separated, and Dave Lallaberty actually did that, so I didn't, really wasn't involved in that.
Fair enough. So, so that, so that was, you know, so we did that to be truly, to be respectful. I also want to point out that we've been flying that flag for a couple of years now. And the only person who's complained, are the two people that you've, that I've heard, have been the people that you've described.
We had one or two others.
Yeah. I mean, maybe that they were our brothers, but I, the only two that I've ever heard from was, actually really one, that I've heard was that one gentleman.
There were, there were three that represented themselves to, to me. And, and one of them was, was quite upset a few, you know, a while back. And he said, you know, "I know the way you feel." I said, "That's interesting, because I haven't told you how I feel. And how I feel doesn't really matter in this, you know, in this whole discussion." But what got mixed up in all of this was the whole Colin Kaepernick taking a knee, and then others around the NFL taking a knee. That, I believe, was the issue. That issue has gone away.
I wonder if that.
Yeah, I don't think this is about the Patriots. I think the anger started with that take a knee thing. It was, it was.
Well, that's what Leah said.
It was a totally, it was a totally different issue, was, was the way I took it right from the beginning, and I, I still think that's what it was.
And that, that even has changed from the Patriots' perspective. They, they, they hold arms or they link arms together, which is obviously being respectful of, of the flag in that situation.
Any other thoughts? Should we have a motion to fly the flag, Patriots' flag on home Patriots' games?
Highly up to you, Mr. Chairman.
I make a motion that our home Patriot games for the, the season and beyond, that the Patriot flag be flown on the common below the American flag at an appropriate level.
Appropriate separation.
Separation between the flags.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Bring it forward.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming back early from vacation, too.
No, that's all right. Don't be the first.
All right. Wayfinding and branding results. Paige, you're up, your last gender right.
I have a colleague, Mark Eberman, he's our consultant at State, was so kind to provide to us.
Let me give a little background. In 2017, Paige wrote a grant proposal to the Department of Housing and Community Development under the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Program, and won the grant for Foxborough. And that paid my fees, my firm's fees, to assist with branding and wayfinding. And over the months since then, we've had several meetings, and we've had very good participation and very good expression about what was going to happen and how we got there. We were happy to explain. But I've been told by Paige that I only have about eight minutes, and I have to do a quick one.
Got a filibuster here. We got a dead computer.
Now, now you have ten.
It was very competitive. This is the one area to the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Program that has the most proposals. So to be chosen through, throughout the state is, is somewhat of an honor. So Paige wrote a very good proposal and whoever helped her.
That's why we pay her the big bucks, to write those good proposals.
So by way of background, though, I think we could talk, we've been meeting as a wayfinding working group, and we spent some time coming up with a family of elements that Mark's going to talk about. But I think one of the key things that came out as far as our discussion, and you'll see a little bit tonight that we could talk about, is what we've kind of, I don't know if we mentioned it to you yet, or we mentioned it to everybody else, but the sign clutter around the common. There are just, before we could even get to the wayfinding, we kind of had to declutter. So Leah's been a great help on this. We actually had another meeting last week to try to just wrap up the details, but we are proposing to remove one-hour parking signs, and then extra signage regarding one-forty and whatnot. I have some examples to show, but, so this is a, all right, who wants to update? So this is a, a time when we're trying to look at the whole, the whole downtown, you know, not just new signs, but before we do new signs, we want to also look at some of the old signs. So with respect to the one-hour signs, I saw a little surprise on the thing. So what's been happening there is, you know, most folks in Foxborough know that the one-hour signs are not enforced. So they park there, and they're not worried. But for people that come from out of town to visit, say, the Union Straw, or to go to the Orpheum, or to one of our businesses, that they do not feel that way. They see the one-hour sign, and they are nervous to park there, you know, like I would be nervous to park there. So that's what happens there. So we've been looking at the parking situation, and we are proposing to remove all one-hour parking signs to allow it to, the parking to function. And then if we need to address it down the road, if there are issues associated with too much long-term parking, then we'll deal with it with this board through whether, it might not be individual signs at every parking device. We might be looking at a more district approach, where, you know, perhaps we have it, we have it marked where sign, you know, parking around the common is three-hour park. But we're not to that point yet. We would kind of want to get a blank slate, see where our problems are, if we have any problems, and go from there. So that's where we're coming from on that.
Can I just make a comment on the one hour too, while you're setting that up?
Sure.
So when we went back and we asked everyone, like the, the business owners and other people kind of why the one hour, everyone said, "Well, nope, we don't want anyone to park here for the Patriots' games." So that was kind of the answer we heard from most people, when you look at the signs, it's one-hour parking every day except Sunday. So that has been a concern that's been brought up, but you can park basically any amount of time that you want on Sundays anyway, so.
Here are a few slides.
So we only have a few slides to talk about, and you're welcome to stop us, either, either Paige or myself. Three of the people here have been involved, David, Leah, and, and Bill have all been involved in various committee meetings that we've had.
And we also have Ryan.
Oh, Ryan.
Taylor here. So we have some people here that are, have all been parked in and out of this process as it's been going on for quite some time.
So we did a number of options, and we looked at various things that were symbolic of Foxborough. And, and so the first, the first thing that we looked at were word descriptions of what Foxborough is and was. And then we looked at symbols, and we looked at various symbols that seemed to have the most general or universal appeal. So the next slide shows you what we came up with after. Before that, I must say, we talked about branding, and what is branding? Branding is identity, visual appearance, intangible assets that add value, and that is to real estate as well as retail and, and your residential ownership. And it's a positive image to visitors and residents, and it reinforces what was known as sense of arrival, sense of place, and sense of shared experience. Going back to what Paige was saying, that when you wipe out the clutter and you start putting things in, you can then phase the project, and many communities have phased it over two or three or even four years. So the expense is, is very limited in terms of doing this compared to other things that are as visually strong and as visually appealing. Next slide, please. So I'll, I'll break this down for you. Clearly, this is Muyal Hall, and it also has at the bottom a reflection of the fencing on the common. It seemed to be a very strong physical presence. It's a very distinctive fence railing around the area. It was also suggested that we put a top on the signs to make it more framed, so that we did that. And the next slide shows you the family of elements. Nope, excuse me, it's one of them. It's a directory, directional. Next one. It's thinking, right?
It's thinking.
Yeah.
This computer does not like me.
The other aspect of this is we tried to do something that was very distinctive and unique, and doesn't look like any other town. And this is a structure in the town that is very unique, and, and it relates strongly to the sense of veterans as well and history. And, and I think that it's an important aspect.
While we wait for it. I've got backup.
Oh, that's good backup.
So this is the family of elements. My computer is thinking.
Let me, let me hold that up.
Yeah, put it on the chair.
The computer is waiting to respond for some reason.
So we took the colors, and we took the design, and we applied it to all kinds of different elements in this family of elements. And what it does is it allows smaller and larger elements to be placed appropriately. And then at the last meeting, which was last week, we, there you go, we looked at a map and how placement would actually occur. Now, each of these elements functions in different ways. There's some for trails, there's some for parking, a lot are for directional, and there's some that are decorative, like the banners or, or the art wing, which is third from the last one. And that's like a weather vane that turns in the wind and can be attached to light poles. The phasing of it, again, is that you, you try a number of them first and see what, what seems to work, and then you could even do prototypes if you, before that, if you want to. And then you, you put out the elements for bidding. And a number of communities that we've worked with in the past, Ipswich being the most comprehensive one, but Hall is, is doing a program now, and Wellesley is having one implemented, and Northampton is working on a series of directionals with us, Wakefield and Reading, and I could go on and on. I think that we've only done twenty-five or thirty in the last few years. I have to tell you something, just for balance, for eighteen years, my firm has been consultants to the Red Sox. So we're not doing that well this year. We're not going to be working until October. But anyway, I just thought, I just thought I'd put, you know.
You should work for the Patriots, you have a better chance.
Patriots, yeah. Different, different feeling, totally. So, any questions about, you know, how it would work? We had a, a map that we actually have sho, we show exact locations at this point where we could try things. And I don't know if they can read it. Again, why don't we show them?
I have a real one.
The printout. And I think tonight. And I think tonight is for you to just, have sponges to, you know, soak this in and think about it and.
Yeah, because you probably, you might all want to come on my office at some point and look at this because it is very detailed.
So Ryan already turned that around?
Ryan did turn this around.
That's amazing.
Ryan was working because his fingers are off today. So this was.
He's a unique talent. Foxborough only has some Ryan. I haven't met anybody like that.
Yeah, we're very lucky to have Ryan. So this is just to show, the dots here kind of show, we have red, green, and blue. That's just, these are all the signs. The green signs, the blue signs are the ones we're proposing, but the red and green are all the existing signs out there. Everything that's not blue is existing. That's a lot of signs. So then you come over here, we've removed many of those. So the green ones are the ones that we didn't feel should be removed. And then these red ones are, you can't really see the blue dots, but these are the ones that we're proposing. It's very limited. It's almost like life. The first phase we're proposing would be, as you enter the block of downtown, it would be, not downtown, uptown, it would be welcome to Foxborough Common. We kind of came up with that idea as avoiding the uptown, downtown, and really you're entering the.
That got me very confused, by the way.
You really had it by the end very well.
And then, and so it would be like, that would let you know that you're arriving to a sense of place. It's like, oh, I'm coming into someplace. And then when you come into town, what we're really focusing on is what we've been hearing about a lot lately is parking. We want to declutter a lot of the clutter and then we want to make sure we have clear directional signs to our parking areas in town. So for right now, that's basically all we're proposing is some of those parking signs to show, there'd be something out, you know, to show the town hall is this way. We were thinking of going back to the family of elements. Something like, oh, it doesn't like that other slide. Something like this one here where you could write, you could just put a P there. It'd be similar to like a P, but maybe one of these or one of these with a P, the parking, and then I'd also.
It looks better on the TV screen.
Yeah, it looks better. Then you could also say town hall. Like, for example, up at South Street and School Street, you could have, where I could point to, you know, P down this way, the director, and also could say something like town hall with an arrow, recreation with an arrow, schools with an arrow, something like that. So then folks were coming around.
Library.
Yeah, and then over there would be library plus parking. So we're looking at those key ones. So we have a very limited program right now that we're recommending.
But Paige has always started raising money.
Yes, I've already bid $2,000. I haven't been able to bring it to you as a gift yet because we need to, they came in rather by surprise, so I have to set up a gift donation, to set up a gift account apparently. I've never done that. So you'll probably be seeing it at your next meeting, but we have had two donations for downtown businesses. I believe more are coming. So the good thing is that we are already starting to see some excitement around this. You know, we've been working with the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative on banners and now this, and we're going to really start to see, you know, a shift in sort of the thoughtfulness of our Foxborough Common area. And I think you'll start to really get a sense of place where you're like, oh, we've arrived. We've got, you know, the Foxborough color, we've got the Foxborough history, the Foxborough fence, you know, there's a lot of pieces and some information that folks are saying, we don't know where to go and we don't know where to park. So ultimately, we think this is going to be a benefit. As we said, we're not looking for any action tonight. We just wanted to introduce this to you. I am glad to send this map out and share it with folks because it really is, it's so miffy. You'll sit here for hours saying, wait, what sign is that? And then you come to the key and you can look at it and you'd just be amazed at how many signs there are and how intricate it is. But we do really think we have a good plan here to declutter and really start to promote. And again, there would be future phases, depending on how this is received and how it works, that we could really make it a comprehensive package. And then in our entries to town, you know, we could have something like, I'm never going to get to it now, could we? Slide five. But you can have those welcome to Foxborough signs at your gateways. And then it's sort of, again, it's sort of this consistent look. So something like one of these, you could have welcome to Foxborough over at our town boundaries and really welcome to people. And then they'll know, and then when they come to the Foxborough Common area, they'll say, oh, look at, we're here. This is all part of a sense of place. So that's where we are right now.
Paige, what's the timing of this? Do we know at this point?
We're ready. I mean, what we would need to do is get the board's selectmen to okay this one, they've had a chance to look at it. And then it's a matter of ordering some signs, you know. I think what we talked about is whether we do a prototype or whether we go right in. I think we probably go right in because the signs we're looking at are not all that expensive. Probably putting in some of them, that first phase, it's quite limited, and then go from there, decide how we want to build on that, sort of see how the feedback is, see what the selectmen feel.
Do you have a cost for the first phase, what you would like to do in the first phase?
We didn't calculate that because the prices have gone up a little bit, about 300 a signing or 400.
It would vary in terms of the number and the size, but you could have impact with probably 10 grand right away. And then if you wanted to go, you know, a fuller program, 25 or 30 would probably take care of downtown.
But right now, we're looking at nine signs. So, and those were under 500 apiece, so we're actually, for the first phase, we're probably under 5,000.
And that whole first phase is focused on plugging the, like, the Ps you look for when you drive around and look for parking areas, you know.
And that's not unlike other towns and cities who do parking first. And that's a major concern of every other town we work in, so that would make sense to start there.
Paige, have you discussed this with the Historical Commission?
Well, we have our representative here.
I think it would help to back up a little bit.
Oh, they have, then, okay.
So these weren't, these weren't just the brainchild of Mark. He didn't just come to us and say, here's your sign. There was flip charts and meetings and then prototypes that went out and, you know, maroons and blues and yellows and the colors flipped and the no fence fence. So there was a bigger committee with downtown businesses, Historical Society, and a lot of different samples went out. We probably almost frustrated him at one point with the vote taking and, yeah, feedback.
But there's been five or six meetings at least on this topic, right?
Yeah, and we did a lot by email, too, with, you know, sending out prototypes and then seeing what people liked and what they didn't like.
Paige, how many signs do you think you'll be taking down, coming from someone who walks downtown every day?
My intern did a little report for me, but I haven't, I didn't, I haven't issued it because I didn't check it yet, but it says.
301 40 signs.
Seventeen of the signs are one-hour signs. Let's see, is there another, so 17 one-hours. They say 30 signs were recommended for removal out of 170. Might be slightly more or less because I haven't fact-checked it. This was written a little while ago, but I mean, basically that's what we were all, we were talking about the same thing then. So it's always been the one hour, so.
And then we talked about a process, too, for if signs are going to go up, a more formal policy that, you know, maybe there's like an application that someone fills out and then it comes to us before, you know, we kind of start slowly adding signs popping back up again.
Right, or I've also been looking at other communities to see, like, we're trying to get a nice map, you know, that can go on the web, could maybe be an app, could be somewhere where maybe rather than signage, you have a map that shows districts, you know, and say any parking around the common is whatever hour or just have various things so that hopefully we don't have to clutter up. We can actually have policies that are posted, but not necessarily find the parking space.
A number of communities, after this phase is done, they have a secondary project that includes sometimes kiosks that will have maps and information and street furniture and a full specifications package for every one of the family pieces that a vendor can then bid on easily.
Is there any leeway with MassDOT with the redundant signs on 140?
Yeah, right now.
How should I answer this? Yes, that's how I answer it. But also, there are certain agencies of the state that have teeth and there are others that sort of gum their way through. I'm not going to say who I think does.
Well, I have an example here.
But if you ask them, they're going to say no.
Right.
They will never say yes to you, if anything.
But I have a good picture here to show you what we're talking about, like, this is our favorite one. So what road do you think you're on, 140? So we're proposing to get rid of all the little white 140s and the red, I mean, the red, the green, the big highway signs would remain. And I think we're keeping, Ryan, are we keeping this little 95 one? I think we are, because that's like an interesting.
It's something that I think you see by this sort of small exercise we're doing. It's very complicated to be simple. And that's what we're, you know, edging toward simplicity and basic looks so that it hits you right away, but it's a complicated process to get simple.
So it's almost like we have to strip it down in order to figure it out and have it make sense. And anything that comes down, we obviously save, right, just in case, like, we ever needed the one-hour, the actual signs?
Against the law.
Yeah, okay.
The 95 should come down and be put under the 140.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. You could take down a sign because you see that all the time in a lot of other communities.
Yeah, and that, maybe we could do something like that where.
The green ones, you know.
Yeah, this is exactly what I was trying to. Get the redundancy.
It actually blocks Memorial Hall with the picture.
I mean, when you look at this little map, when you look at this little map and you just look at the cluster of, yeah, look at that cluster there, I mean, it is, we couldn't believe how many signs there were in that little island, in that little area of the common. It's crazy.
So do you guys have, like, a starting point? Like, is it going to be the parking, the one-hour parking signs or is it going to be those signs or the regular parking signs with the arrow?
Now that we have the plan mapped finalized, I can summarize it in a memo for the next time we come back. But basically, we're proposing, I think it's four welcome to Foxborough Common signs sort of at the edges, no, it's five. And then one, two, three, four, five, like five or six of the parking directional signs. So it's not really that many. So we'd probably do it all at once, that one thing. But I can summarize that in better.
But what about, you had mentioned the one-hour parking signs. What are we doing with those? Are those staying, coming down?
We'd like them to come down. That's what we want to do, is we really, we think that's a big part. If we accomplish nothing else, let's get rid of some of these signs, the one-hours and the redundant signs out there.
I mean, the one-hour parking signs are great, but if you're not going to enforce it, why have it?
And no one can seem to come up with any rhyme or reason why or how it was fixed, so.
Have you talked to all of the downtown business groups about removing them? Because I know we've had businesses come up requesting 15-minute signs or parking for this business only.
We have met with the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative and talked to them and they did, you know, that was one thing Leah mentioned or that, you know, the concern was, well, we don't want employees parking there. And we say, well, listen, this is where the businesses have to enforce their own employees not parking there. That's important for you to do. And then the other, the other concern was the Patriots game. And that's when we went, wait a minute, the signs aren't valid on Sunday, so they don't prevail anyway. So there was some initial concerns, but we kind of said, listen, if we don't do anything, nothing's going to happen. So we came around, they came around to it and we got some consensus there. Now, granted, it's only about 10, 12 people that come to these meetings, so I don't want to say that everybody's been contacted, but again, we've been trying to outreach this. We are now proposing to remove the 15-minute signs that were just put up in front of Primos. One of the questions for you folks will be how to deal with the one on Bird Street because that, there might be some issues over there. There's an old 15-minute sign over in front of Sheer Bliss. We're proposing to remove that because they're leaving the business and nobody really knows what that was there for anyway. So, and that's what's Leah's point, we're trying to, if that happens in the future, there'd be a sort of a process so that, you know, you're not just sticking signs out there.
Like, maybe, you know, if you look at the hours, for example, if a business isn't open on Sunday, you know, why should the 15-minute be 24 hours a day, all day? You know, so just kind of pausing if we do get a request and saying, okay, does this make sense? And then if yes, let's talk and think about when it makes sense. There's some parameters around it.
And we've even talked about, like, over on the Primo space, we've even talked about having a sticker made that said something like, except Sundays, because apparently they're not open on Sundays or they're not open in the mornings. So like, why have those spots sit there empty when the, so we're trying to figure out how to make these signs work with the most conditions out there, but obviously it's a challenge.
Mr. Chairman, so what you really have, and this is something that happens over time, is that you need to have a downtown parking strategy. And the strategy will continuously evolve based upon how effective your community is in putting businesses into downtown. Because the more businesses you put in the downtown, the more it affects the parking. And likewise, if you have parking, then more businesses will thrive. So vice versa, you're putting the signs out there, I believe personally, there was plenty of parking in the downtown, we just don't have any signs to direct them to.
They're chilling, yeah. How many people know that are coming into town hall?
That would be a big help to addressing.
Yeah, actually, today I was talking to someone who said, oh, there's no parking wherever, and they didn't know that the whole lot was behind Central Street. You know, like, you can live here and not even realize.
Exactly.
That that lot's there if it's hidden behind buildings.
And New Schneidel lot that we were talking about a little bit. That's going to be huge.
It's going to be 43 in those spaces.
And this is all part of an unrolling process. As you know, as we're focusing on the uptown area, we're busy working on the report that went, it came out last week, you know, we need to now get the business, the meeting with all the neighbors in the area to talk about the directions of streets. You know, all of this is sort of the parking, it's all sort of part of this comprehensive, shall we say, upgrade of the uptown area, you know. We're trying to put some life back into uptown and as we do it, we have to evolve with it. But, you know, we are looking at it holistically. Well, sometimes, like, we're here now and we're not talking about the traffic, but we are all holistically trying to address this and we do plan on, you know, coming together with sort of a comprehensive package that I think you'll see a big improvement uptown. Just got to see at least predictability of where to park, where do people go? And then, a lot of the stuff comes out of frustration. So this way, if people are less frustrated, parking's full, it's full, what you're going to do, but it's more if you don't know where you could park and you feel like you're missing out than if it's really frustrating.
So as the street and road and sidewalk commissioners, this is all in your hands. And I can, once you vote, I can then finish my report and submit it to the state, which will be online for other towns and cities to see.
But we're not voting today.
No.
You'll come back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is just. Hot off the presses, so, but we didn't want to wait any longer.
No, it's great.
We just wanted to get it going and to show all the work we've been doing and, you know, we can summarize it better for you.
What I do recommend, Paige, and for everyone involved in the committee, is to actually come up with a specific recommendation for the board to act on.
Yes, that's what I would do.
Like, probably for next meeting or?
Yeah, probably for next meeting, yes, because we don't want to. We're ready. We now are ready. We just wanted to make sure we have the map done right, that we, I think we finally have it to a point where I'm ready to summarize it and ask for action. And this way, you know, now the thing is the businesses are hearing this. So those that didn't come to Foxborough Common, it might not have heard it. I mean, obviously, Dave will probably reach out if they're concerned about the one-hour parking. But again, I would caution that, like, again, if people are concerned, but it's not enforced. It's up to businesses to get their employees to park, not in the front of the building. And like, we are trying to build something here. So I know there's fear of change, but I do think, you know, we've all looked at this long and hard and we have been talking to businesses, we have talked, and we do think that this is a good recommendation for the uptown area to sort of leave some of the parking issues and to make it more clear where you can park and who could park where and when.
Is it possible to get the existing and the proposed up on the town website?
Yes.
What part of the website would they go to see that?
Paige.
I can put it right on the front.
Maybe it's a day or so and I'll coordinate with Ryan to make sure we have the right graphics, but absolutely, we can put that up there.
It works, yeah.
And folks can come look because honestly, looking at a computer is almost impossible. So the best bet for anybody is to come painfully look at these signs up close because they are hard, it's, you know, it's a very.
You may want to put them down here in the lobby on these little steps so people can easily see them.
Yeah, some people will be concerned about specific areas of the common. Yep. That's more germane to them. Other people will want to see the whole common in general.
Great, thank you, Paige.
Thank you.
Good work, everybody. Yeah, that's outstanding.
Thanks, Ryan, that was a big task, too, to get that done so quick.
I know, we should have had Ryan at the meeting. It would have gone a long way. Sorry, Ryan, we forgot. It would have been a nice thing to have Ryan there so that we didn't have to translate the scribbles for him.
All right. Accept a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn the Selectments Meeting?
Second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor. All right. Good evening, everybody.